See if anybody's paying attention.
Yeah. Sure, everybody's heart is tired. All right, six o'clock, I'll call a meeting to order. You could all rise for the ladies, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you have the roll?
Yes, sir.
Approval of the agenda.
I will approve the agenda.
Won't you approve the agenda, whoever's second?
I wanna... Oh, sorry.
I want to exclude that sixty.
We can... On the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that as soon as we approve.
Wait, no, sixty is not on the consent agenda. That's the regular agenda.
So, no?
That's on the list.
Yeah. Okay.
You want to remove it?
No, I wanna... I wanna talk about it.
That's why I've got it on the agenda. You want to talk about it before then?
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna approve this.
We're not approving your...
No.
You're approving the agenda as it's in front of you.
Okay.
This is what we're discussing tonight. If you change the motion...
Okay.
Then you're asking to either remove something or add something to the agenda. You're good.
All right.
Okay.
Sorry. I just want, there was something I wanted to talk.
Okay, so as it stands right now, your motion is to approve the agenda and you have Lori even second.
Lori is the second.
Seconding. Okay, very good.
Is there any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None on the agenda is passed. Now that, on the consent agenda... All others on the consent agenda will be passed in one motion unless someone has something they would like to remove. But, oh, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about...
Well, it's not on the consent, but...
Everything under three is not here.
Right, the motion?
Yeah.
It's on. Put it aside. Motion, my second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone to the forum? The second reading?
Okay. So...
For...
One, yes. Orness twenty, twenty-one, oh-two is the amendment. This is the second and final reading of the ordinance amending chapter three entitled Administration, amending section three hundred and seven entitled Standing Committees. This was read at the September meeting. Nothing has changed. Does the council wish me to read it and quote again? Or you just wish to ask if there's any questions?
I don't hear it all over again.
Wonderful.
Does anyone have any? That's how that reads now. So we'll consider that part.
Perfect.
And the first reading tonight?
First reading of an ordinance amending chapter three entitled Salaries of Mayor and Council Members. Okay, an ordinance amending chapter three entitled Salaries of Mayor and Council Members. The City Council of the City of Blackduck does ordain Blackduck City Code, chapter three, entitled salaries of Mayor and Council Members is hereby amended and reads as follows. Section one, City Code, section three-ten-oh-one, entitled Amount of Salaries, is amended to read the following subdivision one, effective January first, two thousand... It should be twenty-two, my apologies.
Is it nine?
Twenty-two. The salary of the mayor shall be one hundred and seventy-five dollars per month, and the salary of each council member shall be seventy-five dollars per meeting attended. The following duties shall be defined as part of the annual salary. All regularly scheduled council meetings, both per year, individual meetings with the city administrator and/or city staff, members reviewing council agendas, concerns, or other city action items, groundbreaking open houses, dedication ceremonies, public relations, and other invited social functions. Section two, City Code, section three-ten-oh-two, entitled Special Meetings, and Board of Com- or Commissioned Meetings is amended to read as follows. Each council member and mayor shall be paid fifty dollars per meeting or attendance at special meetings and those board and commission meetings that are council-operized and required to attend due to being that said board, committee, or commission liaison. The following duty shall fall under this section. It'll say it's scheduled, but we're gonna add the addition of work sessions. Then there will be special council meetings as scheduled. Council liaison or commission of board meetings, special commission or board meetings, council-approved committee and/or task force meetings, board of review meetings, budget review meetings, council retreat or training. Section three, City Code, section three-ten-oh-three, entitled Compensation for Out-of-Town Meetings, is amended to read as follows. The mayor and each council person shall be paid seventy-five dollars per eight-hour day and fifty dollars per four-hour day for attendance at any meeting, seminar, or conference beyond the city limits of the City of Blackduck when attending attendance at such meeting, seminar, or conference is in the performance or furtherance of their duties as an elected official, and when the nature of the meeting and the travel time incident thereto is such that the workday is extended in attendance and travel. When required to use his or her own vehicle when attending a meeting, conference, or seminar, shall be made at the federal rate. This ordinance shall be effective immediately upon its second and final passage, excuse me, reading, passage, and publication and codified in Blackduck City Ordinance, Chapter three. Final reading will be done at the next meeting. Does anyone have any questions?
And twenty years?
Yes. Last time this was done was two thousand three. The last time it was amended. Yes, January first, two thousand three was the last time this ordinance was updated.
Let me take a look at it. All right. Public Works, of the first, Christina first.
Um, so the council has in their packet for consideration tonight an amended contract for, or updates for services from WITSET for the combined maintenance and police facility, nearing the construction documents. And this is a quote that Steve Rose put together. And since the USDA approved the plans to go for bidding, it was considered potentially necessary to have the building flip-flopped. So as you enter off of Industrial Boulevard, the first side of the building that you would come across would be the Police Department. And then you'd move into Public Works. That way, the offices and the side of Public Works would be more in close proximity to the water plant. So, Mike and I both reached out to Steve and asked him to, if, first of all, if it was possible. Second of all, what the cost would be. And then we also spoke with Angela Bakavoy from USDA to see if that would potentially slow the project down, at least the bidding portion of it. We confirmed with Angela, she said typically if there's changes like that, it doesn't slow it down, especially if it's just a mirrored image. The most amount of time it's gonna take is for WITSET to actually do all the electrical plants, all the plumbing plants, and they're individual places, individual departments that have to do this. It's not just like push a button and the thing flips over. It's like a mirror, you know? So, this needs to be discussed if we're going to move forward with it. The cost of that is fairly large. What I wanted to have the council consider on this is if it's going to be worth it over the life of the ring to have that added expense, because that would be something that would come out of the cash of the city. It wouldn't be something that the USDA would cover, because we've already maxed out what our options are. What our dollars are.
Okay.
So, when you guys decided to come up with this building?
No.
Why wasn't this brought up then?
Oversight.
Yeah.
But plain and simple oversight.
Yeah.
By the time that...
And we're not saying that this has to happen either, John, but it was...
No, by the time that it was drawn and honestly, by the time I realized it first before, you know, we look, we were looking at it and all of a sudden it just kinda hit me, to be honest with you, that, you know what, it would be better if we were on the other side, being that we're backing equipment out all the time, we're moving equipment around and not... You know, if we're on the west side of the building, then the people that are coming to the PD for the trainings and whatnot that they're planning on doing aren't cutting in front of our stalls. So that's where it came from, you know? It's like Christina said, it's something that we need to talk about and decide what to do with. Would I like to see it this way, where Public Works is on the west side and the police is on the east side? Absolutely, but we all have to kind of come to the decision, do we want to pay this money for it to happen?
And, and as it sits right now, our committee that worked on the plans, two of the five people are not here anymore. So, you know, could we have had another committee even to consider it? Yes, but literally this has come up in the last thirty days done. So it's not something that we're trying to just throw onto the city. It's just an idea, whether it's worth it or not, and do we move forward with it? That is what we want in the council to discuss.
Well, I heard about this before, you know, like a month ago or whatever.
Correct.
And then I was reading this today and I'm like, so... City's already gonna, he's kind of scrapped out on this.
Right.
And then, then you have, okay, I know it costs a lot to put plumbing electrical to me, you know, but it's like, then you throw another ten dollars on top of it.
Yeah.
And then you go, okay, so then, all right, we already have the plans drawn up. So now we got driveway situations, we're gonna add on to that. Could be different.
No. Driver's still saying...
So... I see, what I see down the road is I see more Costco and down the road, not this. And I really want that, I want you guys on the website, because that's where you need to be over by your, your well. I understand that, but it's, it's like, there's always added costs when you start doing that.
Well, that's why right now is, when talking with Steve from WITSET, right now is the absolute time to decide this, because if we do this now, there shouldn't be any added costs with this. It's a simple matter of flipping that interior design, so to speak, that layout. It's not gonna affect how the sewer comes, how the water comes, any of that. It's all gonna come to almost the exact same place. So there shouldn't be anything further, especially not with the driver. No matter how this building sits, you're driving in the same way.
What if the building was north, south, and not west for that?
No. No, not, not to take away anything, but the same thing, then you're, you're gonna be...
Yeah, the property is long, wider than it is tall. Okay.
Correct, and with the way, the length of the building, it, it just, it would, it wouldn't work right there.
Okay. So you have, we, I haven't seen it, so you have two buildings attached, basically two office, two...
It's, it's one building is what it is, and on the east side and the west side are offices. With Public Works above the office being open mezzanine, and your law enforcement center above them being a really large training that they plan to hold trainings for themselves, the county, things like this. In the center are all the overhead garage trucks that the equipment will be going in and out.
Gotcha.
So part of this, it's, it's a twofold thing. One, if the Public Works were to be on the west end of the building, they would be closer to the water treatment plant.
Right.
They would also not have to deal with the traffic from law enforcement coming past those overhead doors when they're pulling out dump trucks, graders, tractors, things like that. That would also put the police then on the east side of the building, which I also think would keep the public away from the large machinery, the equipment, things that they shouldn't be by in the first place, because putting the law enforcement to the east puts them closer to industrial drive, where the cars will be able to pull in and park at law enforcement.
They're just not able to spin that around.
And that was, the hope was just, see, we need to have with Minnesota, the nor- or the winds in the wintertime, we need to have our overhead doors to the south. So we can't really put those, you know, swing it and turn it to the north, or we're gonna run into that whole issue.
Yep. That was, that was wondering.
Okay. Just flipping it also, wouldn't that make it more accessible for police exit? Absolutely. In an emergency? Absolutely. Yes, because they would have as direct of a shot out onto the road. They don't have to worry about a dump truck being parked in the way? Correct. Yes, they would actually have, they would have much more room there, especially for if there was to be training, because on that lot, to the west of the building, there's little space before you hit the wood line over there. To the east, there's a hundred, two hundred, three hundred feet of what is gonna essentially just be molding lawn or, you know, gravel pile, things like that. So when they do come around, you know, for their trainings, there's the parking over there for them too. The other thing, when they do the trainings, if the police are on that west side and they all start going over there, and it could be a nightmare of them parking on the slab by the buildings and all that.
So this would be hauled down to like a safety issue, safety and convenience?
Yes, yes, it's a dual faceted issue in my, in my mind.
Safety, especially if they're in a rush, they're not always paying attention.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I absolutely see what you... Thanks, Don. I'm a visual person, so that's...
Yeah.
I've never seen...
Yeah, I'll leave them out, yeah, for anyone else that wants to...
I mean, it's, it's, it's a great idea, and you know, I mean, it's gonna cost money to do it.
Yeah, we didn't really know what WITSET's dollar amounts were until just recently, as you can see from the quote. Because Steve had to find out two things. A, can it be done, who can do it, and what is entailed to it? So he had to actually get ahold of all the entities that helped the plans originally to find out his original person that he went to. You know, Mike and I are in the same odd as Lori, where you could just push a button and then it'll flip. You do a lot of things on the internet that flip, but it's not, it's not as, it's not that easy.
Oh, it's, it's coming. It's coming very close with flipping a lot of what this is, is having all those departments go back over it to ensure that everything is right and where it needs to be.
Right.
Who's under consideration? When do we need it approved by?
That is entirely up to the council at this point. The amount of hours it's gonna take for them to do it, we are still within the window of getting it done and getting it to USDA to approve and still be able to bid in January. According to Angela Bakavoy, it should be an easy thing, an easy, quick review of his firm department that reviewed the points. Because that was the step I wanted to follow and verify first is, is this gonna start us back at six-month timeframe where it took originally? And if so, do we want to go down that rabbit hole, because we're already at this time, right? We could just come and camp down the road. So we didn't want to start that if it was gonna take too much time and push the project later.
I do understand, Don, your concern for additional costs. At the same time, I'm thinking to myself that I don't want it to be the ten thousand dollar stake that we could have fixed.
Well, you're right. You're right, but okay, so we do this and, and it's done, then down the road, wow, we need this now. Okay, well, that's fine.
That's progress.
Okay, no, it's, it's kind of like...
I'm just trying to get a feel for where everybody's at, that's all.
Yeah, it's well needed.
If the council wishes to put it off to the work session, approve it in November, we probably still have enough time, but I wouldn't put it past your November meeting. I think you would be kicking it too far out.
I wanna, yes, certainly.
Right, that, that's my only concern.
Personally, I would.
This is something that's gonna be around for the remainder of a long time.
And that was, that was why I wanted to grant it that way.
Over a little bit, we could have just went, okay, let's do it. That's... It is, it's, that's part of building buildings, there's always stuff that changes. And they always want more money.
Well, if we could make a motion then, this evening? That's the correct amount, Christina?
This is the amount that Stephen's presented, yes.
And I would make a motion to accept. It's, that's an offer of ten thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars to re-sign the drawings of the Department of Public Works building. Motion, second. Let me discuss that before we approve, or... Everybody understands what's... Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any none, passes? This way we don't miss these deadlines. Mike, do you, you have anything else?
Uh, I got a few things I can just go over quick with you guys. You can see on here, we are closing Pine Tree Park on Wednesday for camping. You know, we have to kind of pick a date every year, because we don't own a compressor decent enough to blow the bargain and the golf course. So what we end up doing is printing one from Acme. And generally, we're kind of at the mercy of them. We want to make sure that we can get one rented and get it shut down. So we usually kind of try to pick a date mid-October, because generally speaking, temperatures aren't like they are this year. So that's coming up. Speaking of Pine Tree Park, the floors and the walls are complete out there from polar insulating, and Juleson should be, I know they brought some of the stuff out there, they should be starting hopefully this week. I'm getting all the plumbing done and everything in there, and then we can get the partitions and whatnot up that are out at the lumberyard waiting for us out there. Uh, what else we got for you guys? We got the street sweeper fixed, unbelievably, and back on the road. So that's going, trying to clean up some of the never-ending leaves. We were able to, this year, still update Forest Street Northeast, the three street lights up there, take those and update them to LED. No, I don't think anyone lives on that street, but that street actually has, we call them the acorn lights up there. They're more of a decorative style. So what we did is we retrofitted the bulb versus a new headlight we've done on all these other, just to kind of keep them looking nice up there. So those are upgraded lights for the, the pond liquor store parking lot have been upgraded to LED lights down there as well. I believe they're brighter, I guess, really, I haven't asked the ladies what they thought of them.
Yeah, they're very...
They seem to throw a bit more light around.
Yes.
I'm sure they, I'm sure they appreciate that when they're closing that night.
We appreciate it very much when we're closing at night, turning out the front doors, yes.
We actually also were able to get the, the three street lights on the frontage road down there that go past the Wayside Rest, Drake Motel, the pond, and then the grocery store. So those hadn't been working in some time. We had found a break in the line last year, fixed it, winter came around, broke again. We actually were able to find it this year, a different spot, and get it fixed for pennies compared to what it was most likely gonna cost us to re-drop a new line in. Just the material alone for that was twelve dollars a foot, material price. We're looking at close to a thousand feet of line there. So that's on, fingers crossed that the repair holds and is good. So, that's on, fingers crossed that the repair holds and is good, and I know that is quite an old line that's in there, so. We just have to hope that it'll, it'll work for the time being. Um, I've got bike coming on Thursday or Friday. Do some sewer cleaning and televising as a part of our uh. CIP project, I believe that's what it all tied into, but remember correctly. Uh, we've got a couple of problematic spots in town with the sewer, we're hoping to get a. Back a better word, the the best look, we think, out of a few blocks here and there, get it cleaned, get a camera. And see if we can possibly re-line that sewer. Minor in place, it's a hydraulic kind of flows in batches. The savings were, I think the cost was roughly a quarter of what it would cost us to dig it up and put new in, so. If it's viable, we can do that, some of it, however, in town is undersized for what it should be, so we'll. At some point in time, end up digging that up and putting larger in. They're coming, um, you can probably see we. Put down close to three hundred yards gravel in the last couple of weeks, onto alleyways and some of the roadways, trying to. Get them built back up and slowly working on that. Other than that, that's, that's about it, guys, the the irrigators are drained for the year and pumped down. Came through summer real good on our wastewater dispersal anyways. Yeah, that's about everything since our last meeting.
Anything for me? I'm ready to set myself up on the top of the building.
It it doesn't end, that's really.
It's gotta be a stop.
I've put a camera up down there before, and the camera went missing. So. Yeah, you know, since I came here and took this job in nineteen. I've had what I call, what my department calls the artist, that comes from time to time and draws. Group pictures down there, and we can paint over those, that's not the end of the world, but. As of this summer, the the amount of vandalism that's gone on in town, whether it be. In the bathrooms, on the playgrounds, or just throughout the city itself. Just ridiculous, it it really is, I don't know. What the problem is, I don't know if it's if it's kids, if it's older people, I I don't know. You know, I, we've replaced multiple paper towel holders, I mean, we've had them pull the the. Tank lids off of the back of the toilets and smash those, you know, I mean, if they can get to it, they're breaking it. Window screens. You know, but down there with the, in the bathroom, I'm, obviously I can't do anything inside nor would I want to. You know, and and outside the bathroom, I've really got one place that I can put a camera, and they found it, so. I I don't know, I don't know what to do, I know that since it was on social media not long ago here. I haven't had anything major happen since then, so maybe some people have talked to some other people and said, you know. People are getting tired of it. You know? I, there there's really, I don't have much options, other than just to keep spending money to replace the stuff they brought.
It keeps it up on social media.
Well, and that's what we're open, I know I've talked to lots of people in the community face to face about it. They told them, if you see something, find me, get ahold of me, leave a message for me, call City Hall, talk to the guys, anything. I'll take anything, I'm not afraid to go and talk to people.
Is that something that we just close in the evening? We lock the doors every evening, I mean, I know that's.
You 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 can, but then you really take away its value.
It's value, and that's, you know, being able to, it's a wayside rest, there's nothing that.
Right, and we would end up having to close that, you know, four o'clock when we're home for the day, and. Most people aren't off work yet, if they wanna take their kids to the park or something, and you know. So, that's, we're trying, we're hoping that the community will help us out, that's really what we said.
Thank you.
Welcome, anything else? What's that?
That's all you do.
That's it? Not, those are just the big highlights.
Sure we can find something.
Oh, I'm sure.
Well, come down and see me, and.
Would you have anything, any other questions?
We've, we're in the hot middle of a mess sometimes, but uh, remodel, um. We run into issues with the sewer pipe and had to go all the way into the men's bathroom. Get that dug up. But, we're still, we're holding out hope that it doesn't push us back too far. Um, the thing that voice and I really, really wanna be is open for opening hunting. I mean, that's what we really wanna be, if it doesn't happen, we'll just. Put our thinking caps on and go outside the box, see if we can. You know, figure something out. Yeah, we do, we can do something like that, get a hold of, maybe a local um, food truck, you know, for the weekend. We wouldn't make the money, but we'd sell the beer, so. Yeah, it all, I mean, just trying to, we go thinking outside the box, so I'm, I'm not, we're not putting all of our eggs in that basket, but we're just. Still optimistic, um, but. Yeah, like I asking them, like, yeah, I care, we can still make this statement, still make the state, they're like, we're gonna sure try, Shonda, so, um. Anyway, that is the hope, is that it'll be up and running, but if it's not, we're, we go to plan B. Um, we have to re-put a um. A flooring on, they're doing that into our cooler right now, like an epoxy flooring, but not epoxy.
It's resin.
It's a resin, yep, and it's approved by the health department, so there's gonna be a time when the bar and the. Kitchen area will have to be cleaned out for this process, that'll be like a four-day shutdown minimum.
Bar itself.
The bar itself. Well, obviously, I can still stay open, but I mean, we're just, I'm just wanting, letting you guys know, cause you know, people around town are gonna be like, what are they doing? What are they doing? Um, yeah.
Lose their money, but.
Yes, they're, well, yeah. Yeah, that's, and that's a question we get a lot, um, they're like, what is everybody doing, you know? Yeah, that too, um, but with any remodel, anybody will tell you if they've been through it, or if you're. Working any of those, there's always surprises in the closet, but.
And we went into this project, you know, we got that sewer line was an issue, we just didn't know how bad. But we weren't gonna know until we got to this point, what that change or it was gonna be on this project, so.
Right.
That's why I put it in the packets, so you guys are aware what that order just is accepted for.
Right.
But, um, the good, I guess the glass half full is that it only went so far.
Right.
Went further than we wanted it to, but it only meant so much.
Yeah, we, and that, there was a possibility that we would have to go through the women's bathroom, and then. Yeah, all the way out of a building, which that would have been, right.
There's been camera more than once since this project has started, so that, that one's been repaired right now.
So, do you guys have any questions about the remodel, about the pond, about any of that?
I'll say it looks great, so far.
Yeah, it's getting there, uh, Thursday, we're gonna put fix, get our fixtures put together, and um. Melty has already ordered a semi-load of booze, cause she's tired of being out of everything.
Yeah, we're a third of what we normally add, it's time getting, getting into.
Right.
We really need to.
Is that what you're using in that metal rack?
No.
Okay, I would like to say.
Temporary.
Sounds like, looks like.
No, those are, that, those are actually going to be used in our storage room.
That's right.
When you're in the back, but they are movable, it's, yeah, we're just trying to get by, we make sure you can come and get. Sometimes you have to run them back and go, I think we have one back here. It's actually sitting out.
It's obvious to learn out, cause we're cheating, so.
Yes.
It's been a, it's been a, one of those puzzles where you have one piece missing and you shift it.
Yes, absolutely.
Like that for about two weeks now.
Absolutely, yeah, well, yeah, cause I I'm glad that they're, they promised, they didn't, we wasn't supposed to be here. Until the end of October. Got them on early, which is weird, cause supply chain stuff, doesn't, you don't rarely get good news, like, but gee, I'm sorry, you can't get Jameson. At all, so, anyway. All got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for those of you that have not met him, I'd like to introduce you to Rob Frank, he is one of our part-time. Uh, officers, he's been on the roster since February of last year.
Yeah, that's right.
Right in the middle of COVID.
Right, um. That's true, um, Rob is an instructor at BSU. Um, he's also a licensed officer, he is um, agreed to be our interim lawyer until we rehire our staff. So I asked him to come today to at least meet you guys, and fill you in on what he's been working on in the process of us being down with staff. So if you have any questions, be gentle, that's, I told him I would help him as much as I could.
Um, hi, good evening, my name's Rob, um, just a little bit about myself, a little bit about my background, um, I was at the sheriff's office from what, two thousand five. To about two thousand fifteen, felt like a sheriff's office, um, I left there, and then I worked for the BCA, um, for right around four years. Um, then I, I took a job by teaching at the Mid East State, um, and I went back to school to, and I just got my law degree. Um, and I'd known days for some time up here, so when I, um. I wanna stay current in uh, policing and uh, different things, so I started part-time with base up here, and then I also worked part-time for Clearbrook. Um, too, I've worked more up here than Clearbrook, but, um, yeah, so, got a call to. The last man standing, so I'll be the police chief for a little bit, um, some of the things I've been doing at the department. Um, for quite some time, there's been an accumulation of like evidence and little administrative things. Um, in-house that I've been working on, disposing of old evidence, stuff that doesn't have any value anymore, um, organizing things. Um, so, uh, general room cleaning, I have a, um, phone appointment with the post board coming up here this week, just to make sure that. Are all in order for the uh, police department, um, and really my goal is overall is to just to make it really, really appealing. And a good spot for your next police chief to come in, and it's big, this is a great little spot, we got nice equipment, things are all cleaned up, things are nice and organized. Um, is that, I I can horn, horn the hornet's nest, if there's any mass to start with, just try and get somebody started with a really. Um, there, um, and then stick your hourwork part back. But, um, but with that, I don't really, um, I don't really have a lot else, but I've been answered whatever question you have. I already wrote down my notes here that, uh, I'm gonna reach out and see, maybe for a pole camera, that maybe the city can own.
For that particular issue?
Well, and just, just to have one all together, um, they've got, uh, one of the things we have another tools we used to use at BCA was uh, pole cameras, so they wire right in. Like an electrical pole, something like that, um, they can, they can be over or forward, um, depending on what they are. Um, so they can either act as a deterrent or to catch people, um, and it might just be a good tool for the city to own, kind of augment. Um, the lack of law enforcement that can be in a rural area sometime, um, I know the colony's super short, like they have their northern deputies, but. Um, and I I just says on the phone with the uh, sergeant that's on duty right now, just touching base with them and see if there's anything going on up here tonight. They, I mean, they're usually pulling people down to where they're called while you're in some of this, down towards the many, so. Um, but it might, might be just kind of an ongoing tool over a little bit, so I'll explore that option. Um, they're, they're kind of, they have, and they're getting cheaper with all technology, so. Other than that, I go through the call tree here, um, lots of medicals, um, but uh, lots of little things, but really, I don't see anything. Uh, really bad and trendy, um, and I can talk, you know, about a little bit, one of the, a couple of things that. Um, I think important to keep a thumb on, that'll keep, um. Uh, I guess they catch a lot of publicity is make sure that we are are registered offenders that are in the city, make sure that uh, they're remaining compliant, so we don't have any. Uh, um, non-compliant registered offenders in the city, and then also, um, just keep a close eye on the missing persons. That's my biggest concern is come back in, that there's been a missing juvenile for three or four days, and it hasn't, you know. If the juvenile's missing for six hours, that's one thing, that's like, is somebody following up, once we get to that twenty-four hour mark. Or eight-hour mark escalating, um, all things go, which I haven't run into that yet, but that's a lot of things that there's. I I get, you know, I'd like to be up there as much as I can, but I have, um, other stuff going on, so that's, that's just kind of priorities that I've set for now, so. If there's other things, I'm happy to, you know, um, whatever.
How many hours are you getting for us right now?
Trying to get between fifteen and twenty per pay period, so, um, my goal is to get up here midday on, um. Tuesdays and or Thursdays if I can, um, for a few hours in the middle of the day, um, see if there's any calls waiting. Um, up here, just go through the call blotter, uh, see if there's any follow-up, stuff like that, it's not, but that's what I've been able to get right now.
We appreciate your all the hearing. Yeah, thank. Like, it keeps our department, you know, legal and all, everything in order.
You know, well, it's part of it's a learning experience, I mean, I put out that I can do the job, it's just more of, I need to make sure that I have, I have the. Time to put into it to learn a job and do it correctly, because I don't wanna leave the department in a worse off position. But I got it, because, you know, I think that sale, um, whatever, that I I don't feel like this happened, but I guess my discussion with the post board will, uh. Um, bring up anything else, okay? Um, but, and the other thing I'm doing, and please reach out, you know, all their licensed officers, I bet that people are. Try and get, um, hopefully we can, uh, maybe get a couple of people from the colony that are interested. Um, in doing some moonlighting up here, so they're, they know the system, they know the kind of how the things work in the colony, things like that. Um, good opportunity, and uh, I've been, I've hit up other officers that maybe are looking for a uh, little change of pace that worked for a bigger department. Um, so, you know, a spot where they come and more priority on calls, less priority on uh, traffic stops. Um, things like that, so, but again, it's, um, you know, all ears as far as, and how, you know, how. Time would be best spent, but pretty optimistic that we'll get some, uh, like get a couple of good applicants up here. And I think just kind of stuff, uh, um, you're getting things a little bit more organized, we'll hope that. Like, get some people excited to work up.
And and people just like seeing the. Seeing the car, you know, cars going through, so.
People up here are great, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I try to go out to lunch at uh, whatever places and things, but. I I like working up here, and I can really push that, I can, I, you know, it's an offer I can tell my friends, hey, this is really, it's a fun spot to work, but. If you're looking for all the action in the world, you know.
Exactly the place to be.
It's not the place, but. Yeah, my, my friend, my friends are ten years older than we were ten years ago, so sometimes, like, that's a good thing, I'm okay with a little bit less action, so. Um, so, so I'm I'm optimistic that, that, um, people will find a couple of officers to. Help their work. So hopefully not overly optimistic.
Does anybody have anything for?
Yeah, yeah, and um, I'd like calling email just to robert dot break at black dot, you know, mm, dot com, so feel free to shoot me. I try to get that a couple times a week, but. Please check it, I'll be over again.
My daughter's a criminal justice major in BSU, suppose you could give her a little.
Yeah, what's personal, what's she doing over at BSU, they're over at BSU, that's right, yeah, yeah, you can go over there, we can, you can go to skill your summer.
Uh, we tried, we tried the BSU thing, oh, no, 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 she had to go over there.
All right, moving on. And thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Pleasure.
Of course.
Oh, I have two things, um, and I, I apologize, I have. Oh, I have two things, um, and I, I apologize, I had approval needed, um, on that Toro irrigation quote mess, but honestly, that, we're. The last time we brought this to the council, it was a conversation of putting it into the twenty-two operational budget, which we've solidified with Toro, that's the book that we provided to the council at the work session for the seventy-five point nine. That take the home systems will be locked in for twenty-two, so when we work on that enterprise budget, we're gonna put that in, um. Additionally, the electrical connections, um, uh, Jim has had conversation with, uh. That's, I think it's Vessler, that did the, uh. Car shed, well, it's, it's very miniscule, it's gonna be less than maybe three hundred dollars with electrical. Um, it's just time, it's not a lot of materials, it's just switching out a couple of, um, circuits, so it's not going to cost much more than what the quote is, so this is something that we're gonna put in the enterprise. Budget for next year.
Okay, so then we don't have to, there's nothing.
There's nothing to approve, we'll, we'll just make sure, I'll save this and when people.
That's all we need.
Okay. Um, the second thing under the golf course, and this is just, um, council consideration, oops, sorry, I skipped over that, October eighteenth will be the last day, we'll be, of course, it'll be closed. Sunday the seventeenth, there's a, uh. There's a, like a scramble or whatever, like a. Yeah, something like that, just a open house type of, uh, last date to go golf, there's. Members and non-members, they're all gonna bring, you know, a public item, they're all gonna be golfing up there on Sunday, the seventeenth, the eighteenth, the fifteenth, the golfers will be closed, so. A little bit later, a lot, quite a lot later than, than previous years, so that's good for the weather, but, um, we needed to pick a date so that we can start working on. Get the most, um, ready for winter.
Yes, though. Fertilizer.
Yes, the winterizer. Yeah. Um, item C for council consideration, though, I do not recall if Kevin or Zedding was planning on coming, but he did send me these two, uh. Items that he was able to acquire that he wants to do, um, a thorough look over before he really brings it to the council for serious consideration, but. He did send me the two pictures, these are two John Deere sixteen-hundred turbos that, um, he was able to find. Um, ones in two thousand two with five hundred hours and the two thousand seven has nine hundred fifty hours on it. Um, he's gonna seriously look them over and make sure, you know, there, there's nothing that really needs to be. Heavily maintenance on before he, uh, puts a price on it, but, um, it's my understanding he acquired this from someplace out in the east coast. So he really did search high and low for something, um, but this is something that'll probably be on the work session agenda, obviously we're not looking at something in the twenty-one. We're purchased, but we're, he did do this homework and this is what he was able to find after the last meeting. And I apologize, Nick, you probably have some questions, and I guess I, everybody won't be able to address them, because I think when I spoke to Kevin on Friday, he like literally got them Wednesday or Thursday.
I see one of them has been from a licensed plate of cars in the back.
And that's because this is, I think this is at his, um, this is at outdoor power, I don't know. So it's at his place on seventy-two, seventy-one, seventy-two, right? So it got delivered to him.
Oh. So he bought them?
He did. He did, and like, and like Kevin said in the past, he doesn't want to get in between this and be the middleman, and he doesn't want to do that, but he. He found them, so he's.
I'd like to know the price that he paid.
Yeah, and I, I wish I could tell you what those, what those numbers are, but I know when he does figure that one out, he's gonna let the council know. It is not his intention to, uh, you know.
But he owns them both now, or has owned them both, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just.
That'll be on the work session?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Kelly.
Thanks for calling.
What's up?
We've been going through a large change, um, mostly good. Um, our regional director, I don't know if you've all heard of this. So I met the new one today, which is temporary, very nice, just a little. Or the library, I guess. Um. So that's all good, we've got two new computer systems, they've been, that's, yeah. Learning a lot, a lot lately. Um, one thing we were hoping to ask for this fall is new furniture, just to kind of go with. We're finally getting back to normal, September was like normal numbers and we'll check out, and it's kind of like we're getting back into doing, we want to do the craft again, uh, we have some legacy events planned, which are music and stuff like that. We'd really like to maybe set it up, not have people fall off chairs and. Not have wobbly tables, um, so that's what I printed off was just from home for office people. Would be a new table to replace the round wobbly table, and then there's three sets of, I think it's four. Of those commercial chairs, and they have a three hundred pound capacity, which I, they seem like they're always pretty good. And then two office chairs. And that with, uh, that a commercial chair to replace everything in public chairs and seating at where we have the newspaper around the table first thing.
It would be a big improvement sign. All matching.
Move those chairs around when things get a little heavy then, a lot of kids up there, um, those chairs with wheels, they're, yeah. They're not the funnest to move around. Um, and then they also, the commercial chairs don't have arms on them, so more people fit in them.
Know what the weight limit is on?
It's three hundred. I'm pretty sure they're, they look like pretty much the same thing that the. And the only thing I would think of those ones are the, the, like, static electricity and what. You remember sat on a plastic chair? Otherwise, they're screwed enough and are easy to move, and, um, then we won't have Adrian switching out chairs all the time. Yeah.
I got a boss issue, yes.
Yeah, we were just using the leathery, the ones that were like synthetic leather, so we can wipe them down a little easier.
Do we need a motion to approve?
The estimate that you have, that LA ride, we'd order it without tax. We under a thousand dollars. The delivery is free unless that's pickup.
No, it says.
That's delivery.
And I ordered, um, the table actually matched the desk that we have in there.
Perfect. Those would be replacing with other chairs that we would even sit on.
Yeah, those, yeah.
See where his concern was.
So.
Hey, I'm not there.
And that's a, so that's only. Three chairs?
Three sets of four, right.
Thank you.
Yes, we have all the agent computers and seating for the newspaper.
Yeah, that's, I did hear you write the first time, well, thank you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I see, I see we do it.
That's part of the motion.
I want you to approve the purchase for the table, chairs and. For the lovers, chairs.
Office chairs.
Office chairs.
I have a motion to approve, go, go have a second?
You have a second?
Do we have any discussion on this? Think something that's needed?
Yeah.
Long overdue. Uh, all is in favor? I oppose.
Yeah, the numbers are on there.
Yeah, I'll take that off.
We have, uh. Trump retreat, I see is on Facebook, like, every other day, wondering. Um, everybody out there, there is a Trump retreat.
I was gonna catch a call you, was I like, I don't know what time it's, um.
He's usually there by ten, ten minutes. Because I can't find.
Oh, it's actually pretty, yes, it's not bad.
Oh, well, actually.
Yeah, maybe. Oh, yeah.
So like, we would really want to say.
Okay.
Do that.
Kelly, is there anything else?
No, I think they're good, um, other than.
Our bathroom's gonna be open for that, they're gonna be closed. Would you?
They'll be open for you.
We could talk to them later, thank you.
Did your carpet stand like that?
Yes, it looked good, that's another reason I want these chairs. I have to get all of them in the bathroom.
All right.
But yes, thank you so much.
Are you gonna need, um, just those, those other ones, though?
Um, yes, I didn't know how we should do that, because.
If they're not worth saving, then we'll need to bring it up to the transfer station, so.
Some probably.
Some would work on a Friday to get them.
I can figure it.
He doesn't have anything else to do. He's only been trying to be pleased for eleven days.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah.
Uh, Christina, where do you?
Uh, I think to defer to destroying your blog, Rob, you have four.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome, sorry for taking so long.
Interesting to know what you guys have going on. My name's Rob Ingersoll, and here representing the Black Duck History and Art Center. We have gone before the council for several years with requests for donation. I assume people have a copy of that.
Yep, and I actually did provide that to them tonight.
Um, that represents the cost of our insurance for a year. I'm here to make the same request this year, and we appreciate the support financially. It's also nice to have a connection to the city council, it's good to be here. The History and Art Center has been a, I think, an important part of downtown Black Duck for a number of years, I, it's a. Good organization, I joined it because I like the people so much, I, I like what they do too, but there's really some dedicated and interesting people that started and still run. The History Center and, uh, hope the city council will continue to support us, um, with the donation this year and. Here if anybody has any questions about who we are and what we do.
Still always looking for volunteers, Rob?
Absolutely, the, um, spotty opening, we opened, we used to be open Thursday, Friday, Saturday. We started by opening just Saturdays, we are now open Fridays and Saturdays, and we'd like to pick up. Thursday again as well, um, and be open three days a week. I think that will happen, but it's, uh, just. A good question, because they were just scrambling for, to fill in the last two or three spots they had for October a day or two ago. And it's, there are people that volunteer at the History Center that aren't directly involved as in coming to the meetings or being on the board, so. We get some outside people that, that are good to help, gets a little tougher this time of year because a number of them are snowbirds that, that leave town, so. Um, some people end up taking two shifts or working all day on Saturday when we're open six or seven hours, and. So that's a long-winded, yes, we're always looking for help, a couple of years ago. Uh, fell on the council, jumped me about trying to get more young people involved, and it was certainly a legitimate point, I, I thought it was fairly well-taken. We reached out to the. High school pre-COVID, and, um, that has kind of been tabled, you know, trying to get some of the younger people involved. And younger people doesn't necessarily mean high school kids, I know I approached the gal that Linda. I can't think of her last name, that runs the Honor Society there, the National Honor Society, and they actually have, I think, some requirements for volunteering that they have to do. You know, the, and, and a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago, that there was some communication with her with regards to trying to get something going there that's kind of been put on the back burner. Um, we've since gotten what most of us that run the History Center would call younger people in their, uh, forties and fifties. That, um, have become involved in our secretary and our vice president and are what. Compared to me would be a younger person, and so, yeah, so it's. An ongoing thing, you know, anybody that runs a volunteer organization would have some of the same problems with trying to keep membership up, trying to keep open. In this day and age, um, when you're dealing with the public, it can be difficult, but again, long-winded, but yeah, we're looking for, for people to help out.
So, if anybody knows anyone or wants to volunteer themselves.
You're open all year round. We generally have closed January and half of February. In years past, so pretty much. That's our hiatus, if you will.
We not, we usually take that from the. Motion to approve the. Eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and eight cents. Eight twenty-one oh eight. Motion on the second, is there any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, none passes. You're up.
And you as well, appreciate the support, good to be here.
Somebody did want to volunteer, would maybe.
We have a phone number at the History Center, uh, we meet the second Tuesday of the month at nine in the morning.
What are your hours usually on Friday?
We're open. One to four on Friday and ten to four on Saturday. Hopefully again, one to four on Thursday soon.
Uh, have you thought of, like, uh, doing it on a Monday at all? No, our kids don't go to school on Mondays, so I'm always trying to find something.
You know, for the, the city, that's worth, for Blackup, that's worth bringing up, and coincidentally, tomorrow is the second Tuesday. So, um, I'll bring it up.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Uh, possible volunteers, that would not be you, that's when you school on Mondays too.
Yeah.
The school is closed on Mondays, so.
It's a good thought, I, I both for visitors and for volunteer help.
Yeah.
You're up. Man, there's a, excuse me.
Share the screen. Okay, floor, and hopefully everything will work here the way it's supposed to. Okay. Okay, I will do my best to scroll.
I think there is a presentation as well, but we don't.
I don't know if I'm going to be able to.
We don't have to have it up there. We don't need to.
Yeah, it is, but.
That's what we get. Yeah, okay. Hey, well, for those of you that don't know, I'm Amanda Schaefer, with Pinnacle Marketing Group. I also live so I am a Black Duck resident as well. Um, so what I'm here today is to pose a website for the city of Black Duck. Right now, of course, there is a website, but we're wanting to do a promotion for Black Duck as well to try to drive in new people to live here, work here, all of that. And the best place to start is to fix up the website. So with that, we have two different options and I kind of want to go through both with you and then let you know what you think is best and then you guys can discuss. So option one is to keep everything all as one. So the next slide here. There goes that. Perfect. Okay. So option one shows all the basic information. That's going to be for every one of our websites. We have the design, hosting and domain name. Registration manual is included into monthly fee. It's going to be a responsive design, meaning that it would work for both mobile, tablet plus desktop and it would respond to whatever device you have. And then Google analytic reports that you can get monthly and then a two hour, up to a two hour training session as needed so that Christina or whoever could make changes to the website as needed. And then also dedicated account manager, which would be myself, to make changes or do on one maintenance and making sure that everything's up to date for security, making sure things like pack or if they got into. There are updates that occur every single month that we have for a manual update on websites. And so if that's not getting done, if there's holes for all those web people that think that they have nothing better to do besides hack people's websites. So we make sure all that's kept up to date. So basic plans on the blue side is going to be the same pretty much for all of them. Just as we go through, so I'm not going to cover that every. So plan one is to have everything all in one, which is up to thirty pages, which is basically going to redo what you have right now. We're going to apply a fresh design, make it much easier for people to navigate. Right now, it's kind of hard to find things. One thing we also discussed was not having information for Pine Tree Park right now. So right now, there's not really a lot of information there. It's hard to find unless you actually search. You type it in there. So if you don't know what to search for, you're not going to find it. So we want to make sure that that's called out. We want to make sure there's an area for volunteering for places such as Circle Center. And then also somewhere where people can write testimonials when people visit. Not the testimonials out there. And then we will have a membership directory as well. So that would include what you have now for anybody that is a member of the city, but then also any of the surrounding areas. So people can find local businesses, want to try and shop local.
So that would encompass like the chamber.
This is going to encompass absolutely everything. Right. So this would be also the golf course, but everything in the city is going to be here, but yes, it would have the chamber members called out.
Kind of like how it is right now. Yes.
But streamlined, streamlined, easier to use. Plus it would allow us to create navigation directly for those ads. Those ads could target right back to the website rather than trying to work with a third party. Okay. So moving on to option two is individual sites. So this option is really the one that we would suggest, of course. So that's why I wanted to give you both options. Scroll down a little bit more. We'll kind of go through the different options that we were suggesting. So we have a city website. That's going to be approximately twenty-seven pages and it's really just focusing on the city. So like any other city, large city that you can go to that just has their individual city site. Like the local parks, local attractions, things going on, an events calendar. Again, we would include the volunteering, pine tree park campground, testimonials, things like that. This also would include the thirty minutes of updates each month, each month, excuse me. So on the bottom of each of these, before I get going too far, it does have the production estimate. But the last slide does have a comparison. We will discuss the comparison on pricing. That's the city site. So that would be one of the sites. The next site that we would have with the city is their chamber website. So the chamber would have its own site that would be used for a membership directory, events calendar, registration forms. You could do banner advertising there. So when you do have a chamber member, they could actually advertise on there. So that could increase your chamber membership. You could also put out that advertising space for other businesses as they would like. So that's also an option. I do have in the deck here different examples of sites that we would kind of do similar just so that you guys can look at later. They'll visit the Migi, this one that we did that would be. And this one would be up to five pages. Again, this is in addition to the city. And the next one is the golf course. So a lot of people, when they go, you know, want to go golfing somewhere they've never been, they're looking for a specific golf course site. Obviously it's owned by the city, so that's why it's okay to have them together, but we would suggest separating it out. For this one, we would suggest just a low maintenance plan because you don't foresee a lot of things happening every single month. A low maintenance plan does not include the thirty minutes of updates per month. So it still includes the security, making sure things are up to date that way. This would include, like if you do have something changed, like your request to be changed. That's just what wouldn't be included. So that would be done early. And then any additional changes that you did want, since they're not included, is at the eighty-five dollars per hour in fifteen minutes. That's our hourly rate. And this would include membership forms and then calendars, full sponsorships. Event registration could be done right on the page. And then the Town and Country Club in the Migi is an example of a site that we've selected for you to look. And then you can go to the next one. Then this would be for the pond. So we would suggest having this one broken out as well, just because you guys who have, you know, your specials, you could advertise, you could advertise some things that come in all the time to the pond, things that, you know, different events that you have going on, things like that. So we would again suggest a low maintenance hosting plan on this one. You would get training on how to make changes. So if you wanted to do events, certainly do that on your own, super easy, drag and drop program. Everybody can pretty much figure it out. Um, this would include an online menu, events calendar, photo gallery. We could apply the social media feed since you guys do a great job of social media. That can actually just scroll right on the website. So there's always updates happening on your site, which is nice. Um, this one, there is an example, two examples, actually, Florios and Raphael's. So examples for you to take a look at. So the next slide is our comparison between option A and option B. So one thing before we go into this, for option B, having multiple sites, you could have the choice to say, we don't want the golf course to have its own site. We want that in with the city. So we could cut it down to three sites instead of four. So again, we could move things around as we need. We just wanted to give you the suggestion on what we think would be best, not only for user experience, but overall SEO, which is search engine optimization. When people are on Google and they're looking for a golf course in the area, it's going to be easier to find if it's not buried in the city website. It's going to be its own golf course website. So just things like that. So the difference is we have the one website versus the four websites. All updates are included in option A. Most updates are included in option B, the most being where we had that low maintenance plan that did include that thirty minutes of updates for two of the sites. But if we needed to add it, we can always do that too. We foresee, oh, we're going to have updates every single month. Then we would do the high maintenance, but we just don't feel you need that high maintenance plan where you're paying for updates. If you're not going to do them every month. So that's the difference between forty dollars a month and seventy-nine. So we would just suggest a low maintenance if it's not. Option A really is just an improved design and navigation. Option B is better all for overall search performance like we discussed. Similar to the site structure for option A of what you have now. And then the two different development fees. The development fees are the one time. The four thousand one sixty-five for option A is that all encompassing website rebuild. And then the six thousand three seventy-five is for all of the sites put together. So we did individual sites. That's the cost total for all of them together. So it's a little bit higher, but you, we are making multiple sites instead of just. And then the monthly is of course where that major difference, if you want to take a look at it. So seventy-nine dollars a month for the one site versus two thirty-eight, if you have the four sites. For one site, for what we have, for what we have.
That's pretty well outdated.
Two thousand nineteen, but taken over by another company and not updated since seventeen. So, yeah.
And then you pay for updates.
Um, I don't pay anything extra for those maintenance. Unless it goes beyond the hours that they break.
And you would have the option to make the changes on your own. That's included in the next hours of training. So we could provide option for anybody that needs it. Of course, it's under your discretion of who would have access to make those changes and we could give and take that away as needed.
Yeah, nobody else.
Okay. But yes, you would have the option to make the changes. But then I would also be there explaining changes.
I would like, I would like Melissa and I to be to the pond if we.
Well, yes.
Do this. That would be great.
Yeah.
Somebody goes and goes, that's wrong. I'm like.
One thing to note with that, changes usually happen the same day. If not same day, usually within the next twenty-four hours we make those changes. So we try to get them done. If they come to be and they're a little more complicated, I get them done within twenty-four hours. Uh, but otherwise, if you do it yourself, maybe thirty seconds, once you figure it out, you need to fix the word pricing. So questions?
I, I guess I don't have any questions. I know a lot is riding on the city's website right now for the rest of.
For the, the other proposal. I guess you guys were waiting.
Yeah, to that group of combos between development core, people and chamber.
Chamber.
Yeah, when Pinnacle presented to the, those two groups of presentation, a lot of it circled back to the city's website as it's outdated, it's old, it's this, it's that. So that's why the council's looking at it right now.
So it's coming from marketing expert and our development core and a chamber.
Of wanting to see something more than what it has now.
So you think work together? So they've already seen all this. About this.
Not the website. Because the website comes straight from what you just said. Whereas the rest was for a marketing proposal to bring in like Google Ads, Facebook marketing, those type of things to bring people to Black Duck, move to Black Duck.
They're working on a separate thing, not just, not the website. They're working on a way to actually really push the community in a completely separate way.
Well, one of the, one of the things, one of the easiest things that we could do, we seem to be update our website, operate like it's twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
What I, sorry, I have no, I have, so this, I mean, the monthly thing seems like a no brainer. We're already spending, when you say two hundred and thirty-five dollars a month for the one website that we have now. We can get six of them for, four of them.
Four or two thirty-eight.
Four for two thirty-eight. I, I don't know. I mean, I'm excited about this because this is something that I have been trying to look into as an individual for the pond, like just being like, what can we do? Uh, yeah. One of the other nice things about this proposal was that Amanda and her team has been able to break it out by the four key areas of the city that it represents. And as it sits right now, the way I budget the city's website is that all comes on a bill. With four separate complete websites, we could actually budget it differently.
And you could receive an invoice for each one.
Yes, liquor could be in charge of liquor's page and they're running.
Each person could be there.
Each department could. Yeah. And so the city wouldn't be burdened with such a large bill on an annual basis.
Yeah. Every entity makes money.
But yeah, theoretically, yes. But yes, so I mean, this would be moving the city into a completely different path. So if, you know, it would take some learning curve for those that are interested, that are used to just going to Black Duck and Amanda. Um, but in most cases, the people that are looking for golf and they're looking for the liquor store, that's what they're going at Google for. Is they're actually looking for that specific thing and they end up finding it after basically in Facebook in order to mind what they need to find in.
But we would also bribe them from the city website up to the other sites.
Is that.
So I was like.
Yes.
Cool. Go ahead, Bob.
Is that something that, that we, we can add, being able to pay for things online on those websites?
We do have that option. It's not included in the pricing right now. Um, but there is that option and depending on what route we go, some cost money, some don't. So it really depends. But yes, these sites would have the option to have pay. You can want to pay for their water, but whatever it may be, that can be added. Yes.
Currently, what we have right now through our, our new pay system for our utilities and the campground is an all pay. The government's portion and they've just given us the H D mail to embed into the website. And it doesn't matter who is the host, it can be done on any platform. That wouldn't change. We'd still be maintaining that until we, we can do that now. We already do have. You can pay bills online. It's on the, it's on the main, main webpage. It says pay your utility bill. And it's only, it's only been live for about five months.
Okay.
But it is live. So.
But yes.
That's okay. You don't need to download it. We forgive you.
Back in the lower, like, collection.
Yeah, that's a lot of, I don't think.
We can continue to do any ones that. But if you wanted to pay your revenue, because I gave it in with.
Anything else we can add. What, what I provided to the council paper for on this is, is what we have what the city had to shell out to have Marketing Factory group take over and reformat and basically redesign the website back in two thousand and nineteen. Business. We had no choice but to do it because the platform that was based off of was antiquated. Back to two thousand and seventeen, a designer did not take that over and, and keep our website up at that time. Not only were they controlling our website, but a number of very large, heavy hitter websites, including our local dental office, Wisselton Lab Group, Security Bank and many others. So at that time, back in nineteen, we had no choice but to provide our post domain to another entity and have them design it. So we would be looking at another redesign. That's what I'm using.
That's news.
Right. That's hard enough front in order to do so, which I have not budgeted for. But if we go through in the format of four websites, then it was what we're doing for hosting, maintenance every month would not be there next year because it would be separated out to the rest of entities.
That would be up to say the chamber do, do what they want.
Well, and that's something that we need to present up. I mean, I guess do they want to take that portion over because as it sits right now. Because we have an all in one type of website. Um, although there were, there was a time where those entities actually took it all and paid for a part of it, including the development car and the chamber that has since fallen on the city. I think the chamber kicks in a little bit every year, but it's not enough to handle all of the maintenance we pay every year on their website.
So I'd like to know whether or not. Yeah, I'm, I'm all worried just to know who's going to be giving one with one.
I guess what I would like to propose is, you know, Amanda's I'm here to at least give this option for consideration. I'd like to kick it back to the chamber because they have not seen this section of it to see if they're willing to take over that one single page. And that cost every year to have their own.
Right. And if they, if they do decide or you decide not to, the chamber could stay on the city site.
Right.
And you could just have three instead of four.
That's where I would, I think that's probably the way it's going to end up going.
But.
But I would really like to make sure with them first.
Right, because we, the city would be obviously like we are, like the city is now, we would be assuming those charges.
Correct.
But the charge for the one. But the charge for the one site would not be higher, having this chamber on it. Does that make sense?
It does.
So even though you would have three sites instead of four, the development fee would go down because we're not building four. Your monthly fee would also go down because we wouldn't have four. So if you'd like, I could give you the total.
Yes, I would like that. They need next ones.
So I could.
Presented to them then. I'll first look up to.
You have your own, or I have a, somebody hired out there for that.
Right, Christine.
Well, I mean, if you have those, the. Running before we have some fires, that would all.
Right.
Anyway.
So.
We got your back, Christine.
I mean, I think it'll be beneficial to have.
Um, yeah.
And then we can circle back to the work session.
Well, Misty will help.
To me, this is a no-brainer. This is, it's, uh, it's basically approved. It's just a matter of getting everybody on the same. On the same.
I feel like it's either the chamber or not.
Right, that's how.
That's it.
Yeah, it's the old, they either get on board or they come. But we'll move forward.
But I think, yeah, we can forward it in a good way.
And I will be having the chamber's lady next week. Myself, I was.
But yeah, that way the Lenny Shark has. So that's going to be really important when there's a new model work.
I think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Let me know.
Yeah, I can get you in touch with them. Great, um. Next thing I have from your, my department would be to approve the revision of, uh, Resolution twenty-one oh one, which. Changes the annual appointments and designations with the new council members.
How long is the approval resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one? Resolution of annual appointments designators?
Have a push it down a second. There any discussion on that? Everybody's good with what they see there? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Ours?
Um, my next item for council to consider is. I've been briefed with some updates on the downtown redevelopment project in the last couple of weeks. Um, since the work session, uh, I have met with the subcommittee and the owners of the theater. So the engineer has met with. J D Construction and Carl Dovmeyer, they're the entities that would be working on. Demolishing the buildings as well as doing any necessary reconstruction. Um, it has. Been determined about, from Stevens, should keep not completely a hundred percent free anxious. That, um, the two, uh, new additions of theater are sharing the wall of forty-eight main. Um, in addition to that, and they're not a hundred percent positive, they have to do, um. A little bit of deconstruction to find. Further this, that there is an I B in that runs north-south in the, in the theater. That could potentially be sitting on forty-eight mains. That said, there are some necessary deconstruction and reconstruction plans. That would, that would need to be involved in, because when the grants. Um, was requested from deed, there was really very minimal reconstruction. That was under the impression that would need to get done. The awning that's contiguous on the buildings, maybe some. Some exterior wall resurfacing, that type of thing. Um, without getting seriously into any deconstruction of forty-eight main, it would be difficult. To narrow that down, but the engineers are pretty certain that there's a couple of sections that are sharing. Um. That's one of the issues that they found out. The other, um, is that the estimate for the asbestos mitigation is coming higher than what the grant was allowed for. Um, be it materials, labor, however you want to call it, COVID issues, it's, uh, it's almost eleven thousand dollars more. Than what was allowing the grant. It still has to get done if the building's come down. Um, so. I met with Steve Rose and the owners of the theater recently. To present to them these engineering issues or challenges, if you want to know, so that they were well aware of. You know, what could be a problem. Um, it begs the question, is the theater on now what is city property? Because their wall is city wall. Um, it also begs the question as to what happens if those buildings come down? Does the theater stay up or not without any serious reconstruction? Um, I do not have solid estimates from J D Construction on what it would cost to rebuild those two sections of the walls. Because they really have not got a solid grip of what is going to be involved in. So what came out of the meeting with the owners of the theater is very positive. Um, they still want to see this project continue. Um, they are looking and has asked for my assistance on trying to find some. Um, there's some funding that can help the reconstruction of those walls if that ends up being the case, because. Um, as much as the theater is a huge staple of a community, they understand it's not. You know, they don't make a ton of money with that business. I mean, we all know that since COVID, you can get. A movie online for dirt cheap. So what draws somebody into going to a theater is that experience. And they understand that having the theater in the community is extremely large staple, so they want to still continue having the business. Um, but they're going to do what they can to partner with the city to hopefully make sure that this project moves forward. That said, um. There is a potential that if the city chose to do nothing. And give this money back to the state, that those buildings are going to come down anyway. We all know the states have what forty main is in, which is connected to thirty-two and connected to forty-eight main. At some point, those buildings will come down anyway, whether somebody takes them down or they come down on their own. So the city is at a point right now where. We push forward, which I don't want to give up on this project because I know the future of downtown. Relies heavily on it. Um. And we do the best we can to try to keep the theater up. Um, Steve has presented, um, uh, an amendment to the original, um. Excuse me, he gave deconstruction plans in the proposal that the development corp paid for when the grant was written. And they paid for those services. Well, now he actually has to make reconstruction plans to keep the theater up. So there's an amendment, um, in your packet for that, of which is not included in the grant from deed. I also provided Doug Ryerson's Building Systems Corporation estimate for the asbestos mitigation. And how much that's going to traditionally cost. Um, but I can tell he was, Doug's team is ready to start tomorrow morning and I've given them the go-ahead. Because that asbestos hazard comes out, it doesn't matter. If that building comes down without us taking the asbestos out first.
We're responsible for it.
Yes, sir.
That is so outrageously ripping the city off, twenty-one thousand dollars to take out that little bit of asbestos. I think you should get another bid. Very.
Do you have another asbestos mitigation?
There must be another company around here beside it.
So Kelly Fosson is the person that does, that is this in this area from Paski. He worked for me on a project here for City Hall. And he works, he works for Doug Ryerson. Um, they do a lot of mitigation all over. They did one, a couple of them in the G for the burgers. Okay. So he's the team that Kelly works with, so that if you know of another one, I'll call Doug tonight and tell him stuff.
That number is, for that little bit of, uh, asbestos removal is just. I say no, that, that shouldn't be more than a, a eight or nine thousand dollar gap. Really?
Well, that also includes, you know, bringing it to the transportation vehicles, too. Okay.
It'll. Station at the rate of the dollar.
Okay. But he's been given the go-ahead?
I give him a verbal go-ahead this morning, yes, because he's going tomorrow. He can get his team and have it done this week. So if the council's going to override that, I'll call him tonight.
Where are we, uh, drawing the amount, where, where are we taking the money from?
Right now, everything's coming out of unrestricted revolving loan. Because it's a reimbursable.
Who's paying that grant?
Deed.
So the city is not paying for this at all?
So the redevelopment project is a grant loan, um. Award. So we have a hundred and sixty-four, a little over a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to do this project. That's including everything from asbestos construction and demolition. That is a reimbursable, um, loan that you get once you do the project and you submit a payoff. And the state reimburses the city for those funds. After two years, when the project is done. Then that, um, amount of money becomes a loan to the city. Until after it is resold and developed by an outside source. And at which point, then the other than fifty percent of that becomes a forgivable grant.
Well. Do you need, or also approve this, Christina?
Well, it sounds like I need some guidance, yes and ask.
All right. I will, uh, move to approve you now, a bit, from, uh. Building Systems Corporation, is that, we want to be that technical.
Sure.
In the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Does my motion have a second?
You have a second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there any further, is there any discussion on this? You dealt with any?
Asbestos removal is not cheap. If it's a safety issue, if the building ever went down and someone ended up getting sick, we could be dealt more than twenty-one thousand dollars.
Don, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but where are we getting the numbers from? I mean.
I used to do that stuff.
Before or after opening a big regulation? Well. It's how everything got to be.
Yeah.
I was certified into that. I was, actually.
Yeah. That's just, there's not that much flooring there. No.
The majority of it is in the lower level of the building, in the old bowling alley area. It's two layers.
Yeah.
Twelve by, or nine by nine high ups.
Right. And there's a, a certain procedure on how it's supposed to go on.
No. Open.
I can't work for the city.
If, uh. We, uh. Oh, the motion on, on the table right now, we have, uh. Will we, you can talk to us, I mean, I.
Uh, you, you guys do what you want to do, um. I just think that's, uh, oh, I'm surprised. I think there's all different city for. Because they can.
Oh, it's, sir. But that, uh, is there any, anyone else special? All those in favor?
I.
I oppose. With four to one, Christina.
Move forward then?
Yes.
I apologize, I don't mean to put council on the spot, but I knew that this kind of. Be taken up and I literally did not know when Doug is going to come in till this morning. So it's, it's not that I, I knew I had a time, Don, I literally phoned, called me at like one sec.
I read this earlier and that's what I, what I had to talk about.
Certainly, certainly.
Because.
Um.
I was trying to get, I was trying to get a hold of guy in the city's office. Never got a, well, yeah.
Um, that's what about this, um. Reconstruction?
From what's that?
Yeah.
I mean, the city is going to, um. I don't like to. I don't want to point fingers, we're right here right now, and I'm not going to. But, uh. The amendment, I understand that they're doing more than, uh, what they originally had. That's perfect.
My hope is that I will find some additional funding. I cannot. Ask, the, I've already spoken with Ryan Lambert from D, he's in charge of this grant loan program. And amending, um, or asking for more money is not an option. It's just not how the program works. The options that we have as the city is we send the money back. Reapply and start the whole program over with all this additional funding and hope we get approved in February. When it is awarded, well, actually it's March. And hope we can still be on track and the buildings don't cross themselves before then. But the risk we've taken by doing so is that we've already done the land acquisition with the development corp for forty and forty-eight main. So that dollar amount is not reimbursable anymore in the next, if we did that. Um, one of the considerations spoken with the owners of the theater is. Does the theater still stand after all this project is done? Does the theater need to stand and does that building come down too? As much as I don't want to see that theater come down because I know it's a huge staple to the community. There's all kinds of risks involved in it and the first thing I want to do is try to find as much funding as I can. If the campus allows it to be city, so that building still stays standing. But if the city were to, uh, assume. But if the city were to assume that property and maybe apply for another part of this program to take that building down too, that could be an option that can happen over the winter, but that building isn't some standard. The last two owners have put money into the roof and other entities inside it to keep it running and to keep it open. And we, as the city, would have to deem it some standard for it to qualify for grant. And in my opinion, it probably isn't. It also doesn't qualify for a preservation historical grant either, because it has two additions on it. The original portion of the theater has been covered up by them. So there's funding out there that we have to help the theater stay standing. Whether it's somebody out there with a really deep pocket that has it here for this building in the city, or it's the Nielsen Foundation or the Landen Foundation, or maybe more Western Foundation, or something getting out of the owners' house. And I'm not done trying to find that.
So is it the one wall?
Yes.
And what they're saying is that they couldn't, there's no way to even take, you were saying.
I do.
Say, but jack it up and then replace the wall.
That, that is, that is what Stephen is actually proposing, right? Okay, is that that would be what it is. But the problem is that the original grant of this program did not fit that, whatever that dollar amount is.
Be to do that.
Into this, into this budget. And is this where this number is coming from? It's nine thousand? That's just his services to hurt, to make reconstruction plans. That's not considered, that's not what it would cost to actually do it, of which, yeah, Jim and Don both said, yeah, it can be done. They have no idea what it would cost to do it.
So you guys had these architects over there three months ago walking through, and you guys are all over there looking at all these beams and all this stuff, and they didn't notice any of this stuff before?
Before what?
When you guys were all over there?
Before when?
Three, four months ago?
This just happened in the last month.
Okay.
Yes.
But this was all talked about, like in June, May, June?
So the original, I, I hear where you're going with this. So the original, your original grant proposal, when they originally went in and looked at it and had engineers look at it back in January, then where is Don? Is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm talking about this summer. But you guys, when I remember here, you guys were talking about, oh, we're meeting our architects over here, and we're going to go through the building, and we're going to look at these beams that are holding up the roofs and this and that, and see how they're tied in, they're going to look and see how they're tied into the, to the theater and this and that. And that was like, I think, two months ago or whatever. And this, so this is all supposed to be looked at then. Now all of a sudden.
It just happened in September, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. We had our stakeholders meeting with the owners of the adjacent properties in, on August twenty-fourth. At which point, at that, at that, we did not know Witschek did not know that those two sections of the theater were a shared wall. All he had with him was the demolition project coordinator. He did not have JD Construction with him at that point. Then they met in mid-September and went through the building.
I thought there was a different company that just backfilled it.
That's, that's Carl Dovmeyer.
Dovmeyer.
Yeah, but he's not a contractor. He doesn't build.
No.
He takes down.
Yeah.
So he, they did not see. They, they were not at the point where they were able to tell where that IB was until this meeting with JD Construction, because they build. Carl just takes down.
So that wall is on city property now?
Ironically, it could be, yeah, because there's a gap of about twelve inches from forty-eight main and the original theater building. But the front of the building of the theater where all the concessions is, is an addition. And then when it remodeled, the back half of the building with a new screen and the back of the building is also an addition. And as vast as, as we can have, that Steve can tell, those two sections were just built right up against forty-eight. Now campus have given Witschek permission to go in and punch a hole in the back half of the, the back extension addition to verify that. But because their kitchen and their pizza oven and concessions is in the front, they're not going to do it there. Like, he's told everybody, I'm about ninety-eight percent positive, but until he starts punching through forty-eight main, he's not going to know. And what that wall is made out of is clay tile. But, you know, it's not cement cinder block, like most buildings are made out of right now. So he's very apprehensive to start punching holes through walls when it could support another building.
So he could do all of it up to then, or he has to do it all?
Or you're going to need a hole?
Yeah.
But others.
Take a roll, roll through the clay tile.
Right.
Have I given you guys enough information? I apologize if I missed something.
This, this has to be decided.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe simplify this. They've done this, this. This is before us, certainly came on. So, so what they're saying, they have done nine percent of what they were hired to do.
They've done more than that, actually. With us, yeah, they've done more than what they planned on. Because when they agreed to the services back in January, so what the development corp paid for, it did not include this many meetings of construction or contractors. It was some deconstruction plans, and that's it, not reconstruction plans. And now they're at, now they're faced with that potential of having to do that because of that unknown level of the theater.
So are they going to, did you say?
How do they not know? Because there's no plans for these buildings.
They don't know.
They, they don't know. It doesn't matter. If you knew how these buildings were built back in the, help me, forties, you know? You know, they added on and they added on and they added on. Believe me, I shook my head when they told me there was an IB potentially stressing on forty-eight main. I'm like, how do you just do this? There was no land use permits, no building permits on record. They just did it.
Oh, our options are we either approve it or we discontinue the whole project, basically?
Yes.
Well, because Witschek is telling us right here in that letter that they're done. They've done as much as they're going to do.
So we either we go forward with this or we.
We go forward with somebody else.
Or something.
And we start somebody else off, all over with what we have.
And it came twenty-six months.
Quite possibly, quite possibly. Quite possibly.
We'd like to see you look at and drawing about what it could be. When it's all done.
I have dropped that, I have dropped that suggestion, yes.
Roll it in on the.
Yeah, I dropped that suggestion. Would the council prefer to have this on the work session and ask Steve to promise that he can speak for it, better than I can?
Well, at this point, we're not, we're not gumming up a project by, by having Steve come in and say, hey.
Right.
I want to put it in front of a firing squad, but.
Well, no, I mean, trust me, I thought, I thought, I mean, in all due fairness, I thought the meeting with the owners of the theater was going to be a difficult one, and they were wonderful. You know, we've been transparent since day one that this project could have a lot of issues we had no idea walking into when I presented it to the council in January, too.
The last thing we want to do as a city is try, is mess with someone's business, you know, they're.
We love the theater.
And to me, they're doing the community a favor, to be honest, by running, by keeping it going. But, yeah, if, but if we want to have Stephen here, and we're not going to slow anything down, and everybody's questions can be answered, then let's do that.
Okay. I have no problem. The next items, Max, are just reminders of meetings that BDC needs this Wednesday at eleven o'clock. The planning commission's scheduled meeting is October twentieth. The ambulance board meets on October twenty-first. The next city council's scheduled work session will be the twenty-fifth. And then the November council meeting will be November eighth.
We have some boy anniversaries on holiday.
Yeah, Paige made it to our one year.
Hi, Paige.
Wow, I'm just joking.
Chamber, you're in banquet.
Yeah, as far as I know, it's supposed to be on October twenty-fourth, but of course, I don't know other details. I could share that with the council prior to. Haven't seen it formally sent out yet, so I don't know the time. I apologize.
And something that we talked about, I'm sure.
Yeah, closer to the community is going to be October twenty-third from ten to one here at City Hall. So we'll be sorting out and taking those donations. And then the chamber meeting is also done at the twenty at noon. This month's meeting is, can you help with that, on the road?
Anybody got anything else? Council member reports? Anyone want to share it?
I guess I did get approved to be on the Headwaters Regional Development. For Thursday, every month.
Wonderful. And I heard that Mr. Zemec is no longer. So Tim is coming back. And he's never going to be able to retire.
Right when he thought he was over.
I know. Well, it's a very large role.
Yeah.
And Tim's been in it for decades. So it's a lot, a big responsibility and a bigger area to cover. They'll find the right person.
Of course, and do it during. All in favor? You stand in the jury. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.